You can hear it, okay Paul? Yep. Call the meeting door. Any additions or deletions? Any additions? I just had one, Fungy Rose Perry. That's it? Anything else?
We have the bill three twenty-nine.
Bill three twenty-nine, yeah. Wait till they come here. So, Fungy Rose and bill three twenty-nine. If nothing else, can we have a motion to approve? Secondary?
Secondary.
All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. That's it, good. Minutes of September the eighteenth. Everybody's had a chance to read those. Comments, anything? Can we have a motion to approve? Some move?
Secondary.
Secondary? Paul gets it, Peter, because you have two fingers up first. Any discussion on the minutes? If none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? No business arising from the minutes? So we'll move right on to Director CAO. Might seem to be in a hurry tonight, like. Okay. Planning, planning department, no development permits issued, but two development agreements were processed. Building departments, four building permits were issued. Fire inspections, there was two fire inspections. Fire department, there were fifteen calls. Thirteen being in town and two being in the district. And nine of those thirteen in town were aligned and signed, yeah, calls. Any of those were frequently repeat customers?
Yep.
We have that in question. Have a chat. V I C Shore Road. So, September was pretty busy, with around a thousand visitors this month. And for the week, we are opening, for the week, we are opening October, we had a hundred and forty visitors. More people are starting to find us now at the new location. Public Works have begun construction on the new pickled tables for next summer. As well as put up the new town, a D V map outside of the V I C. Warfarad Alley was held on Labor Day with a good turnout. We can read fall weather other than Hurricane Lee. And it's the V I C closed for that day. No damage caused from that at the V I C. Tourism was down everywhere this season due to the wildfires and the rainy season. So, the V I C closed for the season, October seventh, Saturday. And will be reopening in May twenty twenty-four. So, hopefully next year will bring a busy season. Office of the C A O being, the municipal funding community buildings, monitoring and analysis grant. So. Summary, I guess we have, uh. Monitoring is all in place. We've got the final report for, so now we have base lines on the, uh, on what, uh. Power usage or electricity usage that we added, the sites that are being monitored. And so, uh, we gotta re-review some of this before we end. Municipal refund, we'll be funding, help fund this one. Uh, we can get more funding if you wanna go further on that, uh, on this project. Oh, we, we hear and then make any recommendations. Jeff and I have discussed it as a municipality, same, their, their goings. And although we get some base numbers before we, we might need more data collected before we make decisions on, uh, which you continue with another program. Sale of a shore road property, so new purchase and sale agreement has been executed with the buyers. Closing date is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And approved, date of proof of exonerating the property to residential is January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. So that should give us plenty of time to get that finished up. Uh, job description. Detective Assisit and I have been waiting, or been needing to discuss the community development coordinator position. We reviewed the current job description and found it to be broader than it needed to be. Which we believe led to some of the issues we saw in disciplinary action. We drafted, we drafted a new job description for a new position, which is, uh, attached to this report. For councils consideration. Job title is Administrative Assistant and Special Projects Coordinator. The focus is more on administrative duties, which includes funding opportunities. Research, filing and filling in as executive assistant when she is absent. And other administrative work and less on communications, managing engagement and marketing and promotions. The proposed salary scale for this position would be a level-two scale at forty-four thousand nine point six to fifty-one oh fifty-two. I would request that council consider funding this position for one year, term effective January second, twenty twenty-four. So I include the, as I said, the job description, the draft job description. And for council review, if you have looked at it, if you have any questions, that's fine. But, uh. Yeah, you look at it, because we, we made a motion not to fund the position, now we're throwing fifty-four back into our operating budget. So there's discussion to be had whether we can afford that, but, yeah.
Yeah. But there, for the first three months of, for, yeah, January to March is already funded, that is this year's budget, anyway, right? And this, this salary rank is less than this, the other one, yes, too.
Is there any reason why you have the January first or September starting? Then on April first or?
Well, I guess I was, because basically, well, I guess a couple of, couple of reasons. One was to use up maybe three, three months of, of the previous budget, previous position's budget. And by that time, you should, you would have relatively, uh, some idea of whether this is, that position is what we're, what we're for. Right? Before you have the, sort of, the discussions with the upcoming, upcoming budget, right? Yes, would it be a tough one though? You bring somebody in January, second, fourth, third, whatever it was, you have them three months. That's not fair to that person started. Because it could be in three months and you decide you can't afford it, you don't like it, or whatever. Anyway, probably lots of discussion, with nobody where their budget's been going, like, a little bit by January, but not perfect, but, yep, Paul?
I'm just kinda wondering if we have three months' salary already budgeted in the budget? If we could find someone in a temporary position to sort of use that three months to see if they would work out? Because that job that you're now describing is not as intense as the original posting we put out.
And that was done deliberately. So that we can, uh. Because, yeah. We identified that we know what the, what, what issue we had with the past position. And mainly, it was around the, the duties that we took out. And this new position is more on administrative, uh, duties. Which is where our really deficit is in the office downstairs. We've got a, you know, um. More so than community development and all the communications and all that. If we get the right candidate, we can, you can always expand if you have the right person in the job. But, uh, it felt, uh.
Now, that, I, I agree with that, that, that's fine. I'm just thinking if we could, we have three months of salary already budgeted. Could you advertise it as a temporary part-time position? And fill it for three months and see how that person goes from there?
Yeah. Definitely do that, but that's, there, no. I guess, I, I would just, when I, we've done the thing, and one, one thing is, uh. We just wanna make sure that, that's why I only put it in for a year. If it was gonna be a year term. But that does, you know, whether we can give somebody three months term, or we may be able to. We may be able to get somebody in in December, because, uh. Severance will be covered by, by, yeah, November. Yeah, it's just, it's, we brought, we had, we had a position to do community development, they, they stretched it to the max. So this is, so now the other way to administrative. So we all have focus on community grant research, which is secondary, secondary.
Yeah, so on grant research is part of the, yeah, we see, we see it as, grant research is part of an administrative duty, right? And so that's one other thing that that person will still, will still do. But, you know, not gonna be the interaction, um, I took, man, the V I C and different things like that, okay? Right? Because, uh. All the reasons that we had issues with, I mean, we sort of, don't close it.
That was a necessary position, that was the first.
Yeah. If you get somebody in for three, four months, that's turned over real good.
Well, I, I know several have approached being a motion to position, I think I sent one to everybody.
Yeah.
They would come for ninety days. They're not gonna come for ninety days, and also not to finish, knowing that we've always said we're not funding the position next year. Politicians, we change their mind, let's leave it, but, anyway. What are your thoughts? More discussion, more thoughts? This is maybe the whole we have to do to council, even, right? Yeah, so that's why I brought it up. I wanted you, you know, for council to go and review it, think about it, and have a discussion. I was not expecting any type of decision yet, or recommendation made tonight. I just, I just wanted to get there and see. And I guess basically, you just get whatever feedback happens, kind of, heads. So if you got questions, write an email to the council, call its thoughts over the next two weeks. Any more, Doug? Okay, so the next one is American Living Bylaw Amendments. Well, the district C A O and I met to discuss the necessary amendments to our respective bylaw, American Living Bylaws in order to be in compliance with section seventy-five A of the municipal government act. We assess the requirement of the fee going from set rate to a percentage to a maximum of three percent. In the short time that we have been collecting American, I mean, we find that administratively, it is challenging to keep track of all overnight accommodations due to the room limit, by the one being required to be registered and collect the levy. We believe that registration should be limited to accommodations with three or more rooms. And suggest. And we suggest that the membership of the marketing and promotions levy advisory committee be amended as follows. Basically, it can, it can, to one citizen and one operator collecting funds from each. And one, uh, appointed by council, and one council member, uh, not specifying the, uh, mayor and, and the ward. Right? In addition. And also to begin section eighteen, the, the committee shall pick the chairman from a voting member who shall not be either the warden or mayor. And take that out completely. And the chairman, so that leaves it open to the council members, and the council member could be the chair. Why is it felt that council, like, the other ones are always from industry? Why is there a?
Well, I guess, not that it can be, but the thing is, may, maybe, um. Maybe some of the, citizen members think that they hit somewhat of the conflict, but they really want to be the chair?
Sure, yeah. Yeah. And then the one, in regards to administrative, the amendment administrative, or whether one or three, where's, is that, like, just? How are we mon, we're not really monitoring that, how are we, just?
No, we expect it to be monitored.
Yeah, but it's been on faith of course.
Yeah, but the thing is, the thing is, we and I started going through the list of the problem. Problem finally sent us their registered list. We get a, we get an updated list, or at least an update, a file each and every day now. And I don't think it changes much from one day to the next, but in those things, what they've got listed. There are some that have one room, and some of them are, are summer homes that people renovate as they're being these, the house, right? And, you know, are they really, I mean, they, they've got, um, up on Victoria Street, by Tommy Cowans, a new log cabin that was built there?
Yep.
They even got that listed, isn't it, is, uh, yeah.
Yeah, because he's not there.
Yeah, because he's not, because he's in Australia most of the time, that he's not, to my knowledge, he's not, yeah.
Yeah.
Registering it, and, you know. I mean, most of it is just a, a matter of, uh, well. Trying to chase, if, if we know that someone tells us that we're registered, and they're registered with us, right? We, right now, any of our registered, I don't think have just one room. Yeah, currently. But, I mean, the district, it's a little different.
So do the two, two lists match pretty well?
There's a lot of add, added to the list, but, uh, some of the ones that I've been going through and finding, the ones that we don't have on our list, they have on theirs, but it doesn't give us a lot of detail as to what, what they're doing, and just what they deem that could be done with it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, well, some of those, I, I don't, I never saw the intent of us actually start pounding the doors. If you wanted new law, faith, and trust are submitted, but committee has a much bigger decision, I think, based on the conversation they had last week. But we may not see any of them want.
Now, like, at, at the committee level?
Yeah. So, we're, uh, I'm gonna talk, you can put that in a little later?
Yeah.
Get away that. So, uh, because we're, we're, we're to the point that something needs to be done. And we need to enforce our bylaw. And it's never happened anywhere that we're starting to blush, that. Yeah, so this will go to the, uh. Being, being a member of the committee, I don't care whether it's mayor, warden, or councilor, doesn't matter to me. So, because I always said I've got a point, it doesn't, we go anyway, so we change it to.
Yeah, that, that doesn't say that the mayor or the warden can't, it's a council member, council, I get that's good with you. And then that way it doesn't go down.
Anyway. And we also, in section sixteen A, so the section we, the word in this is to do with the, the mandate of the committee. And was to increase the number of room nights sold. And. So, so basically. It's, currently it says to direct the use of funds collected through the marketing and promotions levy bylaw of the town and district, so as to increase the number of room nights sold in the town and the district. So the wording appeared to be open to broad interpretation by committee members, and we are hoping to amend this section for more clarity. And so I would like to hear any and all comments from council members on the amendments. So, they, basically, we have at least one member that means that, uh. That they think, that means that we've got to increase rooms, that means we've got to fund things for shoulder seasons to increase the rooms, right? Well, that's not exactly, but that's, that person's interpretation of what that says. Well, that's, you know, that can be too, because most of the room nights are summer books, they better increase.
Yeah.
That's why the major hotels stay open major years trying to increase. But, yeah, yeah. They're getting ideas. My odds, that's why I've asked the committee level, what is our pinch merit for determining whether we're successful or not? Whether the vision falls, and it's time. Next year, there could be more rooms for it, but I may not have anything to do with the pack, maybe it was a.
And it was a bad year this year.
This is not the rush of life.
Yeah.
Although you talk to the restaurant industries, they'll tell you otherwise.
Yeah.
Restaurant, I talked to three, and they had their best years ever. But how much is that a level, and how much is that a food first?
Do you guys get the report from Tyne? Tyne just put out a really?
Yeah, I get those too, yeah. Yeah, I get those, yeah, Tyne, do you guys get the Tyne report and send it to you? Yeah, and to the list, you know. It breaks it down by area, room nights, dollars spent, genitri, or. So if you got any comments on it? Doc, send it to Tom, and we.
Really good.
Can you send the Tyne one to us? Yeah, just pull that one up. I need to sign it up.
We've got a time frame, I guess, basically, what person of the year, we gotta hit with the bylaw, right? So, we're running short on, on, on time, so. Anybody get any comments? So that we can put them up in the, in the draft, and, uh, we're probably gonna have to introduce the draft on the members. The members, council meeting, in order to, to time for it.
Okay, anything else, Tom? Let's say we can, I do. Some reason I lost all my words, I'm trying to, it's just, oh, it's all too difficult stuff there. Director of Public Works.
So we roughed in the bathrooms at the station, also in the back of the bathroom. And we wrecked in the bathroom at the splash park location. Uh, we also dug up the blockwork at the splash park location. So what we have to do, uh, that's what we committed to do with the splash park is almost done. Once the sidewalks board, and then help the buildings up, the only thing that we have left to do is just rough in the plumbing in the bathroom for them. Which I'll, which I'll be doing with one of the employees. So obviously, working very closely with the engineers in that street project, so we can get that, uh, design ready for tender for the fall. So the bandu equipment, just wanna, just talk about two thousand fifteen five ton. The, it continues, it's in the garage again, I'm ready for, please for the exhaust to come in. It's not in my report here, it happened after the report. So, I have had some discussions with the, with the C A O about the truck, and I gave my recommendation to him, what I'd like to see happen with the truck. Which, which we'll talk about at budgeting time, so.
What about the, uh, washing to charging stations? I get asked with that, actually, I'm getting asked, people want to use them now, of all things, yeah.
So we just have to put plumbing fixtures in, both of them, and one of them, the York closer has to go on. And we have the car charging stations, we just gotta go down and dig the two holes for the electrician so they can be installed. And then those two bathrooms are completely finished. So, it'll happen, it'll happen this month for shore, so.
So they wouldn't run for the?
Yeah, it probably won't even turn the water on, truthfully, unless council wants it turned on. So I'm gonna see, we weren't planning on leaving the hall open or anything, and they've really been shut down around Thanksgiving, so. I might have to put the water on till next year, unless, unless I'm told otherwise, I guess, so.
We got a request from somebody that was against the washings, but now they're saying it should be signs that they're closing, because they're watching people try to use them, because they worked out now, so.
I can do sorry.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, they were in favor of them, but now they see people actually trying to pull them.
They're gonna use a lot of things, so.
Oh, they will be. Okay.
So the minimal, uh, probably all seen that it is at its new location. Uh, they finished the surveying today on it, and we're gonna get one of the decks on this week. I mean, between working the dip station in there. The power hook up probably won't be till November. It's, it's in the, in the system, but it's gonna be a day. So, well, Tom touched on a little bit, so. Well, the pick, the pick and dip pass have been poured into V I C. The rezibos are ordered, and that, and the remaining pick and tables are ordered, along with the garbage cans and the all-you-back builder. Um, which happened, I was covering the refugition, so. I think that's everything, Matt. Ask for any questions?
Any questions, Charlie? You got a Z U car today?
It's an S U V, come on now.
Special utility vehicle, for a special person. No questions, move on, Director Finance.
Some recordings there, um, the act of transification, uh, we don't have much to say about the financial statements at this point. The act of transification plan, uh, so we've been fully funded, spent thirty-three thousand five hundred to date. And we reassured we're not going to go over budget, so it's going to be a few thousand dollars. We had the final, uh, public feedback session on Wednesday night, we're on. And we're, fortunately, had a pretty good turnout, I think. And we're fortunately had a pretty good turnout, I think, because somebody was going around door to door downtown saying we were getting rid of parking slots, which actually brought up more people to come, so it was, it was good, and gave Jim Scott your opportunity to explain what it's really about. And some people who were visibly upset, I think, left a lot, a lot happier than.
I ran into one through a ten board, because they're still alive.
Yeah.
They've taken it from losing parking spaces, but closing the street down now, we're making it on the way, that's the, we changed direction.
The, the, the downtown water street was going, yeah, I don't think that's, it's anywhere.
No, it's.
So, I have sent out an email for everybody, and it does have all the panels that we're at meeting on Wednesday night. And really encourage everyone to look at that. And this, you know, this is one of the last chances to look at what was put out. And it's still on written stone, so just get your feedback into Jim Scott directly, or, or to me, and I can get it to him. I mean, just little things, it's, it's quite nice that it outlines on each street, each section, what the existing is and what opposed is. And one other thing that just stands out to me is Victoria Street, we have, we have a three and a half meter multi-use path on one side, but no, no buffer, no green buffer between the cars and the multi-use path. And I thought that was a little odd, so we questioned putting up to it. But just have a look at it, things like that. Yeah, it's, I think it's really important, so that when projects get going, you know, this, this plan, there's something to call back on, I'm saying. Council looked at it, public looked at it, everybody had a chance to keep their input.
I hope everybody looked at it.
There's not much change from when we presented to council, so. But most of it.
Yeah, send in your comments.
And the hall dementia, that's all news, that was already passed and discussed, it was one of the highlights, it was something we had to work for a couple of years, but we're just moving into years. And King Street upgrade project, fifty percent of the grants received, and the R F P for the engineering and construction inspection closes up over nineteen. And Church Street in a similar position, although it's less money, that's just where the design engineer is, it's not for design and inspection services, construction inspection services. That also closes up over nineteen. And Mount Street, the larger one, unless new, new information has come forward, I've been away for a few weeks, but. Our rough estimate is that we're supposed to commit approximately on what was budgeted, or clean thousand dollars over, which is very, very high budget for a two-point-three million dollar project. Just keep in mind, we're watching carefully, because if it does go over the approved grant amount, I C I P grant, any dollars over that approved amount are one-hundred percent power down, instead of funded seventy-three point three three percent by the grant. So, we like to carefully watch that.
It will be higher next year.
If our, if our construction tenders come in high, then we'll, then council will have to potentially make some decisions. And whether that's limiting scope, that may be what's needed, or if there's extra, what, what, one-hundred percent. But that, just letting you know that it's a good potential for that decision to happen, you mean. And insurance slipping falls beginning more and more frequent, generally, they follow this pattern. We, of course, our insurance company protect the town. The insurance adjuster investigates, they find no liability, we still get a bill of fifteen hundreds, two thousand dollars every time it improves.
That's something that started a few years ago, I'm not disagreeing with your pay.
Yeah, and we, it's only about five, the last five years, I think, or five, maybe eight years, that I can remember us being billed for that.
Yeah.
I certainly don't remember before that, Tom, do you? I, I don't remember us ever being billed.
Yes, and I heard it began to happen, it shouldn't have, that's why you find that, but they do it now.
Anything up to thirty dot four will be billed to us, or a normal five thousand dot four. And that's my report, will you have any questions?
Questions for me? Paul, Paul, Paul.
Go ahead, Zander. I just wanted to know if we are continuing to collect rent from the Theater Society and the Food Bank.
Um, I think we have checks in advance from the Theater Society, they're, they're in place. The Food Bank, I have a check, you remember Tom?
I know September's, was, danger, I got a check in September, but I was September or October.
Yeah, I do remember the one check, but you still had the one.
I don't think you will. Let's just follow up with September, so we see, he's current.
Yeah, he's.
So, we're gonna have to keep on. I will know that the C E O and I, the district, men talk with food security and try to make some semblance of what's up there. Food banks, new kitchens, cabinets, food kitchens, that they just. And so we have none of you becoming very soon.
I think there may be some progress too on the district and a place for another resource too, but I don't think that's out there yet.
Yeah. And one loss of funding, but that's not in town, the loss of funding, so I think they, they call on it. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to Special Constable.
Can you just send your report? Seventy-seven Montezale Row, September nineteenth, we have a single that was filled in on the edge of the property, the area is now state. Twenty-seven West Street, the, the wall has been the center of civil matter for what appears between, since nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety. At this time, there's a written agreement from the area to be clean and order of construction events to commence in December, followed from the property to follow up. Eighty-one Montezale Row, contacted the property manager concerning the long grass in back of the building, called them to the site to follow up, safe from the town. In a third position, property has sent the grass back to the building. Two Prince Williams Street, contacted the property owner about the condition of the exterior of the site, they decided to sell behind the siding on the building instead of creating a structure, followed from the site moving forward. And further special on the same level, in the correspondence. One forty Water Street, received a complaint concerning the condition of the east facing exterior of the building, where a large fracturing, normal on the inside of the building. Written notice of photographic evidence has been sent by mail to the registered owners seeking a response to the condition of the site. Owners gave fourteen days to reply with the intent to repair it, the match.
When did you send that? When did you send that? Because it's been a contract of there. And I remember it was since, since, since.
Twenty thereafter, actually.
Yeah, and I have a verbal thing, but it was any of in response to that verbal thing. Uh, we talked about it, and we decided to send a letter, yes, to the owner, not the owner, a letter, finding out what the events and possible schedules. It's an interesting comment, what's our, our responsibility, it's our federal end, it's towards the president, but it's over the water. Just curious.
Can you pick up the letter?
Um, it's been mailed, I personally know it has been received.
Oh, there's been a contractor that will look at that, that's a huge amount of money, tear it down. Huge, I talked to the contractor, I, yeah, I were down there. I guess it's huge. When I say huge, six figures a few times.
Hopefully, we'll get response at some point within a very near future, and maybe that's, we don't.
Hey, good.
Any other questions regarding the data on the side report?
I got one of those, it's a nostalgia.
For your tenant services, C T, T D report, camera covering the can bags was down after the storm, called Pecat, we repaired the down camera, camera was since bought back online. Um, parking control, reported a delivery truck parked in the shoulder of the road down the racket. Um, signage indicating no opening parking, it'd be a consideration to just prevent future situations like this. And also, it was requested for a sign that indicates hidden entrance or driveway in the area, was also requested from the campgrounds. Um, a ticker was, camper, sorry, was ticked, it also had the B I C for open camping.
That truck is owned by the guy that lives right there.
Um, which?
The big racket.
Gotcha.
He delivers fish, that's his truck.
I understand. Currently, at the time, there's not really anything that says you can't, can't park there necessarily, but if it's a continuous complaint, that would be my recommendation, just to prevent this from being that one recurring issue. On the civic address, we had one civic address that requires verification. Dog control, Queen Street, was reported a dog was roaming the streets, investigating reports, found a dog at the corner. Twenty-five King Street, receiving reports of dogs, two dogs seen roaming the area, gave the owner an important warning concerning the dogs. Fifty-one King Street, paying that home visit to municipal housing and park, an investigation of senior, find alternatives, surrendering their cat, admit civil dispute. Give some recommendations to place gravel around the twenty century way, that will discourage any cats from that being in the areas. Crossing yards, no issues or concerns to report, vending license, I issued one special event license and one under a vending license. Taxi license, we had two taxi drivers' licenses, one person in quarantine, but sent them a taxi license. Solid waste management, one seventy-six Queen Street, reported solid waste in visible roadside, moved by the owner, and they since cleaned up the area. Meeting in Sydney Street, paying that home visit to verify progress, there's been some progress, we'll cooperate, are any options of addition more quickly? Delivering homeowner an application for some financial assistance to aid in cleaning the property. Twenty-sixth Month Row, received a complaint concerning the condition of the property and lack of general maintenance, left business fair to commercialization and contracting regarding the property. Since my last visit, the grass has been cut, and a bit more monitoring of the site required since, since my last visit. Bylaw violations, currently working with housing to develop an education and presentation, part two of a packet that can be used to educate and tendens both animal welfare and also solid waste separation source and exposure. Not moving, it's only the technical services, is ready for the first week.
No, busy again.
It's getting worse though, I think that's about, two Prince Williams Street.
Yeah, yeah. No questions for, for me? If done, then. You're done, you guys, and are you done too?
If you want me to leave, yes.
My thing is, I was going to, I didn't want to respond.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, we're the correspondents tonight, Ed. He's probably on the phone. This is, this is. Chairman, Hallie, lovely, I know, Dale Hallie, his daughter. And Michael Tan's building down there, Prince William, near Nelson Curmoses. He's signing it up, it's gonna cover up the paint, I, I drove by, at least it's not random.
Well, it is.
Well, it's round, white, round.
And not to say, I mean, more colors that you want to put on it. So, is he gonna do that there, he's not, he owns the town?
We know again, too, it's by law.
Well, yeah, and I know we're looking at our main bylaw, but I'd like to see. That we'll get, coming up with a bylaw to discover that, so it doesn't have to be.
Is it unsightly? That's the question we had the last time up here, and I think we asked that question. Is, is it, is it unsightly, or is it just ugly? There's a difference.
You'll have more people tell you yes and no.
They'll say it's ugly.
It is, yeah.
It's not, is, but we, we, wasn't Tom, the, the Ward Street, you personally aware of that? Way back with it, and he says, yeah, it's ugly, it's not all sightly.
It's a legal word, even.
Yeah, it's a legal, so it's not unsightly, so you have to say that, and I agree. But I'm just saying, you have to say nearby town, you have to have your house one solid color, it's gonna be these colors.
Saying that it has to be one solid color, but.
Well, that's what you'd have to do there, but, yeah.
Are there other towns or municipalities that have something?
It's north of there, they have, I don't know, I know that, it's a certain big, that sort of, it's.
Yeah, it's an act of craziness.
Well, it's.
Three in drop, so.
Yeah, it's all.
But in that case, you'd have a schematic, like, I understand how you, you mentioned about having solid colors, but like, as an example, Sydney Street public has had almost five different colors. Throughout the whole color scheme of the building, it has a solid base to it, so it makes it more appealing with other side colors, accent colors. So, you'd almost need your bylaw to be worded as such, or else it would still be interpreted as some common color.
I still, yeah, I still think we should explore whatever.
There were certainly enough complaints in the town that we weren't, should be looked in, I mean, there was, I had an in-person complaint about some, a member who had been a, you know, an upstanding parent and family member in the town for many, many years, several generations, and feels that the building is completely inappropriate, that takes from the love of the town. They had another phone call that came in, who felt that it was completely appalling to have a building that looked like that next to the Fisher's somewhere else. And I had another person who called in, who seriously believes council is, who, who's lacking, might not have something in place to solve this problem. And I'm, I'm not sure what we would do aside from, from calling it out right exactly, like, here's your options of colors, this is your options of color schemes, this is what we would, and follow. Enforcing on that could be slightly scary to get in motion, but.
Yeah, true. Yeah, and I agree, but something needs to be done, we didn't do it ten years ago, fifteen years ago, because it wasn't deemed, it was deemed.
Or a basic killer.
Was, it was deemed not attractive, but it wasn't unsightly as regards our bylaws. There's no paint, there's no wood falling off, that kind of thing, it's just ugly.
The retirement is uncovered, the sheet, like, it's closed in, it's not, it's not offensive as in any derogatory imaging or painting or anything like that, or slogans or anything of that nature, so. The unsightly is really hard to support, because again, everybody has a different definition of unsightly, and that's really tricky thing.
But I think it's, it's certainly worth drafting something and seeing if it would stand up, I guess, you called, you tested the lawyer or something, to say, would it stand up? Uh, I mean, any bylaw, let me, it would be, get it by, get it by label, and so. I didn't say whether or not, uh, well, I guess, if you can enforce a bylaw, it must depend on it, and, um, so. I just, we'll have to do some research, we'll have to do some research, and on type of thing, because, yeah, we're quite, we're really doing that, I don't think that we want to go to the extreme of an average world. But, uh, maybe we have to try to set some, some standards.
What's the, there's no way to, we'll look at it after.
Well, down across, on, on, you're, I think, you're, yeah, same as Mount, or Ward Street, your Walties.
Different color, color scheme on the.
Darker, darker, yeah.
Well, I depend on what. What he buys on sale, so that's what he could give you.
At least with this, on my, I noticed on this one, is, you know, it's not, every other, every two things is a different color. This one, he, he does up probably four feet at one color, and then four feet is another color, and, you know.
But it's been laying around for a long while, because he hadn't washed it off to the second level.
Well, sure. Well, investigator, yeah, see if there's something there. The, the issue is, if there is something there, if we go back, because this will be done, we may not give a, change the ones, which you may change in the future, future ones.
Yeah, so it's like the.
I don't, I'm not sure if there'd be something that would make these up, somebody in the middle of the street.
No.
I'm certainly looking at bylaws, but I would be, I think it'd be something that could be placed.
And maybe you can look at it thoroughly, certain zones is what you, yeah, so, that's why.
Fire and so, did you find something wrong with the building? Fire and torture, did you find something wrong, told me?
Sure did. Sure did.
It'd be crazy.
Yeah. And other people that called you, I knew some of them were gonna call you, because like this, this letter came, went into, she had a big endeavor, and they collected a purchase. And I, I invited her to do so, because I said, we've been struggling with this for all kinds.
I had nothing else to offer otherwise, other than recommend the same, that they just write their concerns, uh, in a formal letter, and to present them, the council will send them to the town hall, and share their concerns. I tried to say that, you know, there's strength in numbers, so if more people are feeling the same, maybe I make it a perspective in here, so I did try to be, that's probably better reached there to let them know. So, maybe more letters, um, just, just so you're aware.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, oh, that's cool.
They, they just, we kind of run the risk of becoming fashion police, um, you know, colors and paint schemes from a hundred years ago would have not been fashion today, nor would anything that someone can afford, if their house is in good repair, but they're using three different colors of siding, I mean, where do you want to come down on it, right? It, we've run the risk of being almost totalitarian towns, saying you can't do this, you can't do that, has to be a certain color, has to be a certain size, shape, and painting the world with one color, which ends up being monotone.
Yeah, I have a sister-in-law lives in subdivision, Culver, near Toronto, and there is a paint scheme they recommend for all houses, they can't enforce it, but they have enforced no clotheslines, can't clotheslines in there. Now, the question back, because they say environmentally, you're gonna use clotheslines today, so, it's tough, yeah, you know, like you said, I, I agree, I don't like it either, but.
No.
Unless we have a tool, and a tool that will stand up in court, and that's off there.
There's even places in Ottawa where they have a bylaw where you can't, you leave your garage door open, has to be closed.
Because you don't want to see. Yeah, well, you'll, more than I will investigate it, and that's something, Karen.
Yes, I can see that.
Yeah. In the meantime, just got a nice black Mercedes, BMW now.
I had it for a while.
Yeah, they work your garage. Okay, District of Shell, I just, it came to CEO, and, uh, we had a series of meetings on this, as you see in the letter, a number of years ago. That was with the federal, the federal industry involved, uh, Fisheries, uh, she got defeated. What was her name? Joyce Marie Teller. Bernadette Jordan, yeah, Bernadette. So we've met a number of times on this, and I, I'm not sure how many meetings, but they're pretty generic, because they can't answer a lot of these questions. Federal issue, DFD issue, court issue, I do see there's, just in the newspaper this week, there's fifteen or twenty of them up for charge down here. And I think you said the same thing, we've already addressed all this in the past. Yeah. Now, if you feel, just on our, onto it, it's not gonna hurt anything, but we'll put our, put our name to it, send it in.
I think it would probably be good to do it, because they still haven't really, like the federal government has not officially addressed the issue, to make it clear and forcible. And until they do that, then we're gonna continue to see these issues coming up again and again and again. Luckily this year, they're not dragging any deeply through a lot of all that happens.
Yeah, well, they did last time.
Yeah, but, but is that gonna happen, you know, crops up again next, you know, next year, or at the start of this fishing season, when the harsh old, like, regimen or all of, you know, or are you gonna see other stuff happening? We could, hopefully not.
We could, I, I guess, I'm just, I guess I'm cynical, because it is federal issue with also the Supreme Court issue, and this is where this has been in the past, if I'm having a meeting down the shore on this, uh, what, three, four, or five years ago, we saying what was discussed in this letter, and basically what we discussed at the time, here we have three or four years later, uh, about the same thing. But we agree, yeah, we consider our name.
Yeah, I think they're putting pressure on the federal government, they're not gonna bother to do it. Um, I have a friend that works for Fisheries, notions in Ottawa, he essentially indicated and has continued to indicate, this is not something that they spend any time on. They don't, they don't care about us.
And they don't want to either, it's such a, that's the vision. Okay. If I, if we, direction, we'll stick the mayor's name on there, somebody.
Yep, it's not my name.
Nope, all right, while you're prepared to tell the CD, I'll probably be driving shell every other month for the next little while.
We could offer a host meeting to coincide.
They agree to. Don't, so. We, uh, the, the town was not being in it, we've not said he has some building, the council, it's all Claire. Maybe another, and the council, the other one, uh, the district brought him up, didn't go to our council, so, yeah. I would do that, because it's where you counsel it in a position here, and it's not just the mayor, it's council, the town as a whole, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, yeah. Uh, I intend why Claire would be, because Claire was the epicenter of this whole thing, even though they all took, was the epicenter of the thing. We'll send it in, see what happens. Probably have a, a point game with all the units and with Mr. Minister or Deputy Minister, and we'll report back.
We'll cover it again in three years.
Yeah, we'll cover it again in three years. New business, uh, Funny Roads. Uh, Funny Roads, uh, will be off sometime early next year, late winter, early spring for maintenance. But there's also potential, coming down with Great Line, Great Line Call Bay, and said the ferry could also be off going to Magellan Islands for a while, so Dibby could be with the ferry for substantial length coming next year. Uh, I'm not gonna say who Great Line was, but, uh, so, so I've reached out, I've had a meeting with, actually the ward and I had a meeting, I correct the ward on a couple things, we had a meeting with Joe Walser, I've had conversations with Chris Doctormont's office to do some more investigation. Is, is this factual? The Navy side is factual, usually goes down seven, for sixteen weeks. This being moved to the Magellan Islands is something for you to do, so I don't know if Magellan Islands is losing their ferry for maintenance, so they're gonna give Dibby's ferry over, but there's potential for four or five months without top to the ferry, so.
So there's no guarantee, we'd end up with a replacement?
No, there'd be no ferry. This is the phone call I had, there would be no ferry here for a considerable, so I had that phone call last week. So I've already researched, uh, by talking to the ward, I've talked to M L A, Walser, and I've talked to Chris Doctormont's office. And I got a meeting with Chris Doctormont on housing in two weeks' time here in Dibby, and somebody made me fight it, uh, we're gonna discuss the period. I warned you of that. So that's for information at this point?
Everyone back putting heat on bay ferries to make sure that their places are listed before.
Well, I know he's a cat for, pretty much.
I didn't have Caribbean, so.
Couldn't afford the fuel.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's expensive, that is, yeah. Okay, Bill three two nine, that's, uh, you know, the, the bill, total lack of respect for municipal government.
Yeah, uh, essentially, I want to bring it up just to, uh, well, talking about the fact, yeah, it, it's something that has problems with overstepping, and i- if they were to do it anywhere across the province, it would be an issue, like they're, they're talking about freezing all municipal permit and development fees for two years, and that would have an effect on us in terms of revenue. Would it be huge? No, but, you know, we'd be looking at, uh, you know, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars in, in revenue losses, um, if they just decide, no, we can't change what we, you know, what, what we're charging for stuff, and I just, I guess the overreach, just in general, it's a concern, and, yeah, I, I'm not sure if it warrants us reaching out and saying, we don't agree, or wait until you hear something from, uh, you know, the municipal folks to say.
Well, I think that'd be a topic of discussion around the table, we'll have, we'll, we'll make it.
Okay.
Uh, there's an article, I didn't read the article today, but it's a professor, in regards to municipal governments and all that, he said this is extraordinary overstepping of their bad three little moves.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they stepped into Allevax last year, or this year maybe, or in the city, you've got to start allowing construction. I can understand what I'm saying, six or five o'clock at the morning, instead of seven, so, the, the provincial government of Allevax, if you go to the problem, that would be by law. So they're just, you know, you, yeah, there's a lack of respect, was again. But again, we had that come two weeks to Allevax, so. But I don't know if you've heard any call around the CEO table, or, no, with the, it is, um, the AMA starts tomorrow, and, uh, our CEO session tomorrow afternoon, so I'm sure that, yeah, we'll, we'll have the, have the discussion. Yeah, and over that, maybe we might need to at least state our position, which is what I was.
Well, the, allowing a minister to act, but any requirement to consult with municipalities, that means just, I'll do what I want.
Yeah.
You're like, Tom just decided, doesn't need us anymore, and he's just like, yo, it's over now, and, uh, it's.
I, I spoke to the M L A Walser yesterday, uh, for those that are on his planning industry, that, that trust me, said we should open up our provincial retirement plan to nonprofits into private visits. And I said, Jill, I'm on my way there, but suddenly all my group plans, I have private businesses, suddenly go towards the public pension plan? Well, that wouldn't work, but some people are thinking ahead, way down like yesterday, yeah? That was in the news, that was in the news, look at Eric Watson, it was in the news yesterday to take over, and, so, you, you're, I hate to get you on the back that financial planning to do business for, uh, group retirement, I ask you business as well. Yeah. Okay, anything else to get to now? Uh, Dirtball, you have to have a voice with your camera?
I'm on that.
Tucker? Roland Taylor?
Welcome to Germany, my favorite one.
Second. Michael Dirtball, we're all agreement, let it go home?
Yep.
Okay.